You know, there are plenty available still. Otherwise, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Welcome our new city manager, Mr. Rob Carlinzey. And lovely wife Michelle is here this evening. Thank you for joining us from over the mountains tonight. And I guess I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Carlinzey for an introduction.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rob Carlinzey. I'm currently the city manager of Kenmore, Washington. I'm going to be the city manager there for a few more weeks and my official start day here in Moses Lake is March 24th. So it's actually just a little bit too long. I want to get here sooner than that and I and really looking forward to getting to know the council better, the staff better and the community. And somebody asked me early earlier on if I was going to hit the ground running on March 24th. And the honest answer is no, because I'm just going to have to learn so much about the community. And there is a lot to learn and take in. There's a lot of people to get to know. But I want you to know that I am really excited about this opportunity. And I am going, I'm going, I'm going to be very committed to this community. I will be a part of your community. And I was telling a couple of people earlier that in Kenmore, it's I'm surprised with how many people know people here in Moses Lake. Or where they grew up there or their parents live here and and by far, the number one thing that my wife and I are hearing is you're going to love the people. And that sounds really good to me. So really, really looking forward to that. And you know, and when you work for a city, you can accomplish a lot of things. You can build new roads and sidewalks and bridges and parks and and establish new programs and those are all great, but what I've learned in my career is that it's really about lives touched. It's about it's about the relationships. It's about the bonds you create. It's about the people that you help lift and then the people that lift you. And that's what I've learned in my career, that that's what's most important. And yes, you can do all the cool things and build all the cool projects and those are important. But in the end, it's really about lifting other people and helping them feel like they're valued and that they can be fulfilled and that they can have a productive and happy life. And what I love about working for a city is a city helps lay the foundation for people to have fulfilling lives. We don't guarantee fulfilling lives, but we can do a lot to help set the foundation for that. And that's what I love about cities. So that's all I have. Any questions or?
All right. Well, as I was telling Rob earlier, we didn't really prepare anything for this. So we're kind of winging it, but I will just share a few few thoughts of my own. As I was sharing with the gentleman from the paper earlier, he asked, was this a long process? And I will say, I think that all of us up here would agree, it has been a rather tumultuous and long three or so years. And so first and foremost, I want to thank the community for taking this ride with us and having faith that we would get this problem solved and find somebody to lead us into the future. And I think definitely we have found that in Mr. Carlinzey. For me, really what stood out, number one was his professionalism and true passion for the job. As he explained in in our interview, this career path was suggested to him, I think, early in college. And once that suggestion was made, he never turned back. And I think that's pretty rare in today's world. You know, I hear a lot of people that went to school for X, Y, or Z and do A, B, and C for a profession. And so again, that that level headedness and clarity of direction, I think, really stood out to me. And then again, just the professionalism and his long track record at Kenmore really shows that he can handle a lot of different things, a lot of different personalities over the years. And I've done a little bit of investigation on on social media after the announcement was made. And I can say to Rob's credit, all of the comments I read, you know, while they may have had an angry tone, it was because he was leaving and that he was such a good asset to the community. So I think that speaks volumes, but we are definitely a growing community, one of the fastest growing in the state, I believe. We have a lot of exciting opportunities here right now. And I think Rob recognizes that and sees that this council is ready to again, take this into the future. So we're, we're very excited that you're here, Rob. Thank you for for making this commitment for the city of Moses Lake and welcome. If we could all get a round of applause for Mr. Carlinzey, I'd appreciate it. Okay, we're going to get the meeting started here at 6:30. So in about 10 minutes. So if you want to grab Rob before he leaves for the evening, you can do that. Otherwise, we'll be back here at 6:30. Thank you all for coming. 6:30 citizens who have requested to address the council will be called on at the appropriate time to make your comments. It looks like I received two. If there are any students in attendance and we aren't done by nine o'clock, we'll take a short break and sign your form so you can go home. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Schwartz. All council are present with the exception of council member Fancher, who has been excused tonight.
Okay, I think we need a motion to excuse them. I would accept a motion to excuse Mr. Fancher.
Make a motion.
We have a motion and then a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. Fancher is excused. Uh, let's see, we're at the Pledge of Allegiance. Judy, will you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, we're going to approve the agenda. I do have a note here, however, that staff requested to move the consent agenda item C, which is for Sand Hill Major Platts improvements to the February 11th meeting. Does any council member wish to move a remaining consent agenda item to a business item for individual discussion and vote or make other modifications to tonight's agenda? If we have none, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda with the noted item being moved to the next meeting.
I'll move to per the agenda with the item being moved to the other
I'll move to approve the agenda with the item being moved to the other, or next meeting. Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we have a presentation of police officer new hires. Chief Sands? I'm really well, sir. How are you? You're looking good.
Chance I trip and make this all look bad. So, Mayor and Council, it's my honor and privilege to introduce your newest academy graduates. These folks have at least graduated from the academy and have completed FTO or the field training or in process of it. So Officer Kaden Duncan, if you come up and join me to my right, that'd be great and stay there. Sorry, you're first. I know you enjoy being the center of attention. Kaden is a Moses Lake grad and mostly raised in Moses Lake, enough to say a homegrown Moses Lake kid. She attended, excuse me, started with the Grand County Sheriff's Office as a corrections officer before we could steal her away. She made a name for herself at the jail, so much so that there was a parade of officers that came in to say she should be hired. And quite frankly, it got annoying after a while, but it speaks volumes for her. So she has one son Oliver and a partner Ruben. Kaden has completed her field training and assigned to D shift, which is excellent. Yeah. Joe Utter. Joe was a hard case to get here. You may recognize him from his time as a reporter in the area, and I believe Captain Williams, Chief Fuhr, and myself all spent some time recruiting him. Joe, originally from the Vancouver area, attended Washington State University, go Cougs, before finding his way to the basin. Joe was married to Amy and has two sons, Jace and Riley. Did I say those right? That's pretty impressive. He has also completed his field training and is assigned to C shift. Finally, for the new officers, Roman Trujillo. Roman is almost local, was tied to the Royal City area. Although we were lucky enough to get him, he was living in Pasco. I know the Tri-City is living and working. I know he's working in Pasco. Roman has an infectious energy and attitude. I also urge you to be careful. He's a hugger and he's a strong guy, so you just ride it out. First time that when I gave the oath of office that I've ever been hugged. In Rome described being a police officer as his life goal. He has one son Julian and with his wife Lily, Roman is currently in the field training and by all accounts doing a fantastic job. Mayor and Council, your newest Moses Lake police officers.
I don't want to stand up here anymore.
Thank you. And then on to our newest promotion. This is the new sergeant position that you approved for the 2025 budget. Like to introduce Kurt Liedebor. Kurt grew up in Moses Lake and graduated from Eastern Washington University. He was hired as a police officer in 2010. I saw 2010, a year old. He has been a patrol officer. He's been on our tactical team. He's been a field training officer and a street crimes detective. And you may recall, he was recently promoted in May to corporal. Being an overachiever, he decided he wanted to promote twice in one year. So Kurt will be assigned to take over our street crimes unit. He is joined tonight by his wife Chelsea, son Jackson, and daughter Cameron. Shoot. I said Chelsea. It's his fault. So folks, initially, I was not going to make Kurt take another oath. He just took the oath back in May. But two things changed my mind. First, he's moving up to be a sergeant. And sergeant is a pretty important position. It kind of makes the department run. And I don't think we as leaders could be reminded enough of our duties and responsibilities, especially in front of those we serve and those that we're fortunate to lead. The second thing is Kurt made a mistake. Kurt told me that he didn't get to go through a badge ceremony the first time because we didn't have badges. And so Kurt, believing his wife really wanted to be here, not so much, wanted to go through that time-honored tradition of providing an opportunity for his wife to stab him with the badge. And so I won't invite Kelsey up to badge him after he takes the oath. Kurt, raise your right hand. I accept the leadership position within the Moses Lake Police Department. By accepting this position, I commit today to lead with humility, to develop those around me, to take care of those whom I am privileged to lead and to always look for ways to better myself and the agency. I understand with this position comes great responsibility to be selfless and to make decisions that are right for the entire organization. I commit to making these decisions using our mission, vision and values to guide me. I voluntarily make these commitments in front of those I will have the honor of leading and the public we serve. So help me God. And with that, I will invite, invite Mrs. Liedebor. Mayor and Council, your newest Moses Lake police sergeant.
Thank you, chief. Okay, well, moving on to citizen communication, the council invites citizen comments to hear from the public on matters before the council or relevant to the council's business. The council values free expression of all points of view is an important democratic value in the community. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of five minutes. If others have already expressed your views, you may simply indicate that you agree with the previous speaker. The council expects respect for those who have positions with which one may disagree, so debate or interactive discussions are strictly prohibited. Please refrain from applause after each speaker. Only address your comments to the council and not to staff or the audience. Council may request staff research comments received for potential future action. Please take private conversations outside. When you are called to speak, speak, please begin with stating your name and city of residence for the record. Looks like we do have a remote speaker registration, but it's for later item, correct? Which actually, these may all be for a later item. I think Riva is yours for parking. You're correct. Okay, and we have that on the agenda, correct? Okay, if everybody's, okay, we'll just take the comment at that time. Okay, so please stand by. And then the other moment we have is from Seth Bishop. Are you still here, Seth? Or is that the remote speaker? Sorry, I just now saw that. Is, and he's still on? Okay. We will get to that comment on that agenda item. So next up, we have a mayor's report. I don't have anything this evening. Does council wish to have any business brought to a future meeting? All right, and we'll go to the city manager's report. Moving right along.
We do have one item that is not listed on your agenda, but we would like to recognize our fire chief who is retiring on Friday after 33 years of service. We will have a retirement party for him on Friday from one to four as well. And I believe Mayor Schwartz would like to say a few words as well.
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment. I understand this is Chief Bastian's last council meeting with us before his retirement. And so I just wanted to publicly recognize you for your numerous years of service to the city. We, I greatly appreciated our time together and our working relationship. We may have had some disagreements along the way, but I think we always managed to get through those. So as we're finding out that you're a very hard person to replace, and maybe we never will replace you exactly. But with that being said, I wish you the best in your next phase of life. And again, thank you very much for your service. Okay, is that it? It's going to be a quick meeting tonight, maybe. What Deanna's saying, don't say that yet. Well, we have, we're down a council member, so that might make things go faster. Okay, we're going to jump into a public hearing on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. The ordinance number is 3065. Vivian?
Here's where we slow it down. So the City of Moses Lake Comprehensive Plan is a governing document providing guidance and direction to city government in its actions and implementation of principles for community development. The requested amendments have been processed in compliance with state and local regulations and standards. On May 15, 2024, the Planning Commission held a workshop to review the proposed amendments. On November 22, 2024, the proposed amendments were submitted to the Washington State Department of Commerce for review. On November 22, 2024, the Washington State Department of Commerce acknowledged receipt of the proposed amendments. The City of Moses Lake issued a CIPA determination of non-significance on November 27, 2024 regarding this non-project action. A focus segment of the draft future streets was presented to the public during four public meetings starting on October 14 and ending the 17, 2024. Upon due notice, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on December 12, 2024 to consider and make recommendations on various amendments listed within the staff report here and attached. Three members of the public testified during the Planning Commission public hearing regarding the future street amendments. One member of the public testified during the Planning Commission public hearing regarding the desire to table a request for an urban growth boundary expansion. At the close of the public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended denial of the transportation element with future streets amendment and recommended approval of the remaining amendments be forwarded to council for review. The city is in receipt of three comment letters, which were all provided to the council. All comments received up to this time are included in this package. Comments were received from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Commerce, and the Port of Moses Lake. On January 14, the city council conducted the first reading on the following. Case number PLN 20220010. The hearing, a request to amend the urban growth area to include parcel 17084500 with a low-density designation and an R1 zone. As you can tell, the location of that is in the May Valley area. There any questions on the location? The next case, PLN 20230036, the urban build developers. A request to change the comprehensive plan, future land use designation map and zoning district of parcels 110475168 and 110424001 from medium-density residential to commercial gateway general and rezone a portion of the property from R2 medium-density residential to C2 general commercial. The next case. Gather the location of that property. The next case. Is PLN 20230055, tanks. Is a request to change the comprehensive plan, future land use designation map of parcel 110752000 from medium-density residential to high-density residential and rezone the property from R2 single-two-family residential to R3 multifamily residential. The property is located just south of Central. The next case is PLN 20240121, Community Gardens. An amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, future land use designation map of parcels 090068000 09069000 and 09007000 from parks and open space to downtown and rezone the property to C1 central business. The next case is PLN 20230060, the Comprehensive Plan and Future Streets Map Amendments. City update to the transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan, more specifically the following sections. Section 623, amend to conform road standards to the federal functional classification. Section 65, update city street classifications map. Section 66, update transportation maintenance plan existing map. Update May Valley study with final results. Section 624, update the 20-year transportation improvement plan. Section 625, update the map for road system improvement projects. Section 62627, update transportation maintenance plan future map. Section 6323334, update 20-year active transportation. Section 635, update map of active transportation system improvement projects. And section 646, consider adding additional elements regarding sources, cycles, and eligibility for grants and transportation projects. And create Appendix D with policy regarding potential for regular and annual updates of the existing future streets map and implementing policies. The next case is PLN 20230083, UGA5. An amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to eliminate language directing the removal of the map, urban growth area 5, UGA5 from the UGA. The next case is PLN 20230083, Transformational Housing Center. Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to remove language regarding the transformational housing center. And the next case is PLN 20240125, Capital Facilities Plan, Appendix C. Update to the Capital Facilities Plan, Appendix C of the Comprehensive Plan. Public was invited and commented during the first reading. And tonight, the city council is being asked to hold a public hearing to take any comment on the proposed amendments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there any public testimony this evening? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Oh, sorry. I was going to say, I think this is, that was regarding something else. So I don't think we have anybody. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Discussion? Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to clarify. Just if we do take action and pass this, does this mean that all of these developments are, are moving forward?
Excuse me, the developments are, the request for a zone change within the city will be confirmed. The request for an amendment to the urban growth area will move forward to the county court. They actually have jurisdiction on defining their urban growth boundary.
Okay. And then if the county says yes, that's okay, because I think previously they wanted us to shrink the UGA, if I remember, right before I, we took office. So anyway, again, does that obligate us to do all of this, you know, to allow development?
I'm not sure I understand.
Just because it's in our UGA, does it obligate us to provide services? I just wanted to clarify that.
It doesn't obligate us immediately.
It doesn't obligate us immediately, but the expectation and the purpose of including land in the UGA is that it is anticipated eventually to be annexed into the city. So when we are doing our capital facilities planning or infrastructure planning, we should be planning for that twenty-year projection into the UGA. So the the difficulty is that once you're in the UGA, if you're the landowner, you have a different set of expectations, and their expectation is that they will receive services. Historically, the city has done that through extraterritorial utility extension agreements, or that eventually they will be annexed.
So I guess I'm looking to city staff to help me here. We're, we still have discussions to have regarding regarding water for this area and whether or not we can actually expand out there. So I'm having difficulty coming to a decision without all the information, again, which, if you all recall, I I normally won't vote for something like that without all the information. So am I correct, I guess, in saying, I don't have all the information whether to know whether or not we have the ability as a city to expand out here? Would that be a correct statement?
Two.
Because we're still, we still need to talk about water, right? We're all supposed to be meeting for water?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I can provide my understanding.
Well, let's hear from Richard.
Well, everybody's looking at me, so I guess I'll I'll chime in here. The ability to serve and the the reasoning for serving, I think, are a little bit two different things. So can we run a pipe out there another, right now, we're three miles out of town to Moses Point, to run it out there another mile plus to, I'm speaking of Paradise Point, everybody's, you know, in that May Valley area. Can we run pipes and pumps out there and serve in the short term? Yes, that's possible. The the reasons for serving out there are, that's more, you know, what does, what does the council and what does the community want as far as growth and the associated funds that those those developments bring in and where those funds go to is another question. If we provide water and sewer beyond the city limits, any improvements and any associated property tax increases go to the county and not to the city. And then we do have agreements that say that they will not protest an annexation when we get there. But how long is that going to take and and those funds that we give up in the meantime? That those are, those are financial decisions that that the city needs to make. Long term, the more we commit our water and sewer services outside of the city limits versus inside of the city limits. Eventually, we are working very hard to to get legal access to more water and also keep a good eye on our sewer services to make sure that we can continue to to provide those services inside the city limits and as the city grows. Eventually, we may get to a point where that becomes an issue. It's not, it's not immediate. Is it in the next five years? Is it in the next ten years? Probably not. But those are, those are questions that council needs to address. Whether we are focusing on development in the city limits and those parcels that can annex today versus extending water and sewer services to to developments that most likely will not annex for many years. And the associated revenue loss that the city gives up by extending those water and sewer services to those areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott. I think as a discussion this afternoon, that I was listening to Trump talk about TikTok and how much it was worth if they give him the permit. And I think that part of our discussions need to be very integrated with the county and say, if we do this, when we keep talking about all those tax revenues going to the county, that we get a piece of that pie, because just the the twenty-five percent surcharge on a, on the the water and sewer does not cover the cost of providing that service. So I think for us to go forward, there has to be a lot of discussions with the county. And and I think that needs to be very closely mated and and we need to say that this is what we need to make it happen and not just say that, you know, if they can get one lot for five acres or five lots per one acre, and that makes a huge difference for them, and it should make a huge difference for us. So I think part of any of these discussions need to be, you know, part of them need to be, what is the county going to give up to get what we have to give? So I think that's a big part of the discussion, and it has to be really closely, you know, coordinated with the county.
I I completely agree that those those conversations should be, and and they are, you know, very much council to commission, you know, the the county commissioners. I think those conversations should be had. I have been, as I said before, talking to a lot of different communities, cities in Eastern Washington and how they deal with service into their urban growth area and how their cities handle or their policies regarding offering water and sewer service outside of the city limits. And there are some communities that do and some communities that are very much, if you want water and sewer, you will annex. That's, that's the only people who get our water and sewer. And and there's a lot of communities, particularly East Wenatchee. They do not have a water utility, that the city does not run the water or the sewer. And so their ability to grow through annexation is is very limited. People don't want to annex. They don't want to build the streets and the storm and everything to city standards. They want to build them to the county standards, and so they don't annex and they don't grow. Same thing with Spokane Valley. They don't have a water utility, and then pretty much everybody's on septic systems, and so they don't grow. They, it's, it's very hard for those communities to increase their tax base, increase their annexed area because they don't have a carrot. They don't have that, that thing to offer that allows for that dense development to to raise the property value of of the areas that are wanting to develop. And so City of Walla Walla, their their city code prohibits offering water and sewer outside of the city limits unless they annex, unless it's deemed by the state as a health emergency. That's the only time they're allowed to. So it it just depends on all these different communities. They all do it differently, and it's, it's got to be, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a financial decision. In my mind, what it all boils down to, it, do we, do we, as the city, want to benefit from the increased value by requiring them to annex into the city so that we can enjoy the the short term and the long term benefits of those of those taxes? Or do we want that to go to the county? Or can we, can we get to an agreement with the county to share those those benefits? And at the same time, realizing that if we allow dense development in the county adjacent to the city limits, we are still going to be incurring. They're still using our surface roads. They're still driving in our town. They're still using our parks. They're still enjoying all of those things that 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 urban living gives them, but we are not getting the, the city is not getting the tax base to help support those those other services that we're offering to the community and surrounding community.
How do we facilitate that conversation? What, I mean, we've talked about, how, how can we do that? When, when
I don't know.
Anybody have any suggestions?
Well, yeah, I mean, part of this, I understand. I think some of what what Richard's saying, at least, and this is to Deanna's comments as well, you know. Things do cost money, right? That's just facts, so that tax revenue is important to us. But as you sort of alluded to, Richard, it's not, you know, number one, let's say we leave area five in there. You know, there's, I think there's a project into the county out there for six hundred homes at this point, right? If if we do this, that doesn't mean that there are going to be six hundred homes out there in two thousand and twenty-six. That's just not going to happen, right? You know, and all the understanding I've come to with the developer and everything, you know, this will be very much phased. And I think all the developers are willing to formalize the phasing of their projects so that these occur. You know, you might have fifty houses in year one. Actually, in year one, you're probably going to have zero houses built. In year two, you're probably going to have zero houses built. And then in year three, you're going to maybe see fifty to a hundred and so on and so forth. So, you know, this is a seven or eight-year process to get to six hundred homes, if not more. And as Richard's pointing out, you know, we do have infrastructure that can serve fifty pretty easily, I would say, if not a hundred or maybe a few more than that. I believe in our two thousand and twenty-six budget, when we were talking about this year's budget, we discussed the reservoir out there. And so I know we've been, we're in active discussions about the design of all that and everything. So it's not as if we aren't already expanding services out there. And I guess I would just remind everyone that I think we've elected to keep area five in before. And so I don't know what's changed between now and then that would make my decision any different, but. Deanna?
Well, I think for me, it's more understanding or a willingness to ask questions of city staff when I don't understand something. So since development is six to seven years out, is there a reason to rush making this decision before we have any communication with the county? Because I feel like the communication or meeting with the county, county commissioners needs to come first before we just go ahead and vote on this one way or the other, if that's what we want to pursue. And I think we do, correct?
So I, my understanding, what we're, you're looking at tonight is the comp plan amendment, which is to whether or not you want to, how you want to amend the urban growth area boundary. Previously, it was, the council said, we don't want to take anything out. Remembering and recognizing that we have a a very large urban growth area compared to the rest of the state. Our urban growth area is more than the entire size of the City of Moses Lake today. And at past growth rates, we need approximately, for for the last twenty years of growth for the City of Moses Lake, we grew about thirty-three percent. So thirty-three percent from today would be a little less than five thousand acres of of needed urban growth area for the next twenty years. I'm just doing simple math. Our urban growth area currently is eighteen thousand acres. So essentially, more than three times the area needed. But again, we we want to be, we want to understand. My understanding, not being a planner, is, you know, we want to look at those areas that we anticipate the real growth in and the ability to annex in the next twenty years. And so those are decisions that the council needs to make. The recommendation at the beginning of this was that area is very far from city limits. And so the the ability to annex that in the next twenty years was probably fairly remote. And so I think that's why the recommendation was made to maybe bring that out of the urban growth area. But that's, again, that's, that's a decision, that's a recommendation that was, that was given to the council, and the council decided that they, they didn't want to do that at the time. So those, those decisions can be modified or however, that's, that's the discretion of the council. But currently, voting on whether or not to keep that in the urban growth area, and I, I don't think is the same conversation that you were just, or the same question that you just had. Whether we move forward with trying to work with the county, saying, yes, this is in our urban growth area. But we every, every time we serve a development in the urban growth area boundary, that has to come to the council for their approval, whether or not we serve them or not. We have an option to serve. If they're inside the city limits, we have an obligation to serve. So if they annex, then we will serve them. We'll figure out a way. In in urban growth area, the council, upon the council accepting or or accepting their application or their request to receive city services, then we go through a process of we, we do a extraterritorial agreement slash developer agreement for the the service. And at that time, the city has the option to request things. You, you got to help build the water tower. You got to help, you got to extend your water and sewer services. We can also request in those developer agreements, you know, you got to put the sidewalks in. Because currently, the county doesn't require sidewalks. You know, those are things that if they, if they want our water and sewer services, we have the the ability to ask for, for this in the developer agreement for things that would benefit the city. I'm I'm not speaking incorrectly in my Catherine. That's all, okay.
Yeah, I think I would add, Deanna, that if we, if we would like to have the conversation with the county, we're in a lot better position if we just go ahead and vote to approve this tonight and leave it in. Because if we, for some reason, vote the other way and elect to get rid of it, and then we're going to go back to them and say, hey, we want to have a conversation about this property that we indicate we don't even want. So it's far better for us just to keep it for now, and then we can have the discussion. Right? Otherwise, we're going to have to get rid of it, then try to convince them that we want it back when we just told them we didn't.
I see what you're saying, Mayor Swartz.
Yes.
I don't know, I
It keeps our options open.
Absolutely understand what you're saying. I just hesitate with what will the priority be then? The city, the people of the city of Moses Lake, or this?
Well, this is, so part of this is that we're experiencing growth, right? Which is rapid growth. So there are a number of entities that are moving here that are going to have a lot of jobs, right? So the way that I look at this is, you know, there's a development out there where the guy has an application into the county. He wants to move forward and start building houses. Great, number one, that's somebody who's willing to build houses here. You know, we don't have thirty developers coming here to to compete over projects. That's just not how the market works here. So we have maybe two developers who come here and do business regularly. So this is now another one. So this, you know, I think that's a benefit, right? The other benefit to this particular area is, and again, this can all be covered in in these agreements that we make, is that they will bring irrigation water with them. You can't say that, Richard, about all of that developable property in the city, correct? There, a lot of that's landlocked.
They're correct. They are, they are near adjacent to the lake at that particular location. So it would be feasible for them. There are areas in the City of Moses Lake that some, some of the areas, if you're, if you start going a little bit south and east of town, there, there's some canals there that Uh, some, some of the areas, if you're, if you start going a little bit south and east of town, there, there's some canals there that maybe they could get, um, bureau water. To offset irrigation, but there are other areas that it would be very difficult to get. A surface water irrigation to those locations.
And so with that in mind. You've got a few different things there. Now, the county is also planning to build the connector road, which they've already started. That connects that area to highway 17. So from that. Standpoint, you know, that area becomes a lot more attractive. Again, if you work at the Port of Moses Lake, it's no, no problem to live there and commute. It's 10 minutes. You know, it's wide, flat, open ground, so it's cheaper to develop. And then number three is, and probably most importantly, is that you can build four houses. Out there for the price of one from a water standpoint, right? Because you're not using irrigation. Or you're not irrigating with potable water. So for those reasons, that's to me why this is logical. In, in the course of drafting the agreement with them. We can also discuss the annexation piece. And absolutely, that's a conversation that should be had with the county. But. I think all of this can move in that order. We keep this in place, then I think you and I and. Dave are on a committee to meet with the developers and with Richard to sort of hash out our end of it. So. Anybody else on that one? Dave?
I, I mean, at this point, I think it's important that we keep our options open. And I look at a yes, voting that yes is, is merely a matter of keeping options open. Um, as Richard said, we have the option of providing it. It's not an obligation. But at least we're still. In the game.
Thanks, Dave. Don?
And just a point of clarification on the, um, future streets map. I heard mention of policy that it's just a guiding. Map. I just didn't see it in the, in the packet anywhere. I could just be missing something.
And the exhibit attached to the ordinance, this map was included. And it has a statement. Up above. That the public works provided, and I would emphasize the words collaboration and intended. As opposed to required, um, it says. Plan transportation improvements identified in the comprehensive plan. And six-year TIP include existing and proposed future street locations. To facilitate collaboration in the placement of streets utilities. And/or their extensions. Depicted improvements are intended to provide new connections, increase connectivity, reduce congestion. Reduce peak hour trips and provide network resiliency.
And was that run by planning commission? Did they?
No, we haven't met with the planning commission since we last met with you.
I'm just curious if that would be sufficient for them to be okay with the map.
I can answer that a little bit. I may have had conversations with a couple of them just in passing, but yes, I think that's. That the concern is, is how the document will be interpreted going forward. And I'm getting head nods here, so we all understand. I mean, that's really what this is. It's just. You know, if it shows a road on that map, that doesn't mean that developer has to build that road there. That's.
Not in that exact position, but, or, or location, but the intent of being. Creating connectivity from collectors to collectors and not creating those, those, uh, what Levi likes to call super blocks or islands. Where everybody has to go around. Um, and, and concentrate the flow of traffic. So I, I, it, yeah, it's. If they, we can collaborate and work together and find ways to, to. Keep connections instead of, um, isolating, uh. Pieces of land. That's the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Do you think that that's more difficult here than in other areas, just based on the?
The lake, the lake makes it very challenging in certain, in, in, in a lot of places. We just, you know, geography.
And a highway.
And a highway and, and another highway and an interstate. Yeah. And so, again, we're trying to just lay out, uh, those areas of town that we can still make connections. And, uh. Just set ourselves up for, you know. When, when, because a lot of people, they have the idea they love a cul-de-sac. They love a dead end street. They love nice, quiet neighborhoods, those types of things. When in reality, it complicates life and a, a lot of other roadways when you focus all of that traffic onto those. Um, larger streets and connectors.
And if we didn't approve that element of this tonight, what? What's the effect of that?
We use the 2015 future streets map.
At.
Until 2026?
2027. So the, the intent is to bring this up yearly. When, when we review the six-year transportation improvement plan projects. To review the. The future streets map also.
Well, that's kind of what I'm getting at then. So it will occur in 2026.
If you approve it with the policy that implements it.
Oh, okay.
But if not, we go back to the 2015 future streets.
But we could always just keep this as a draft for now. We've already done the work.
It's, it's a draft with no. Use.
Okay.
So my.
How good is our future streets map from 2015?
It's, it's lacking. So it's lacking a lot of lines and maybe. Connections we don't want, but, um. My intent with this is to bring it to the planning commission, uh. The six-year TIP is required to be adopted in June.
By the end of June.
So to bring this to the planning commission, starting in March to start reviewing it and to start reviewing the, the TIP that's proposed by public works.
How do you feel about that, Don?
I'm fine with the, with the map that's been proposed with, because we can. Make changes yearly. Um, at least this. Adds a lot more opportunities, uh, for grant funding if the opportunity arises. Well, I'd like to include the map.
Vic?
And sorry, the language was added regarding.
Yes, it's in the exhibit attached to the ordinance.
The other comment, I will say that I've heard more than once is that, that the amount of effort. Care. You know, that Levi and others put into this, it's, that it's not gone unnoticed, certainly. So. We're very appreciative of that all around. Thank you. The concern again was just from a policy standpoint, as far as. You're going to hear this from me a lot, you know, flexibility for the developer, the landowner. So we, we know that some of those crossings of highway 17 and stuff, the, the land that those are shown on. People have owned that for years and it's not. They're not going to do anything with it. So. That not moving prevents something else from happening. You know, we want to avoid that as much as possible. So.
Understood.
Anybody else? And accept the motion.
I'll move to adopt the comprehensive plan amendment ordinance 3065 as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Oh, you can't say something now, Dave.
No, it's just, what I was going to say is I'm excited that we have just created this great big thing and handed it to Rob.
You, you just left.
Rob, there you go. I, I, I'm just acknowledging that we've just voted on a, on a. Big bunch of stuff. And it's going to be right on your lap. So welcome.
Good night. Travel safe through, Rob. Okay. Well, that was somewhat painless. Thank you, Vivian. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Which it looks like item C has been moved, as we all noted before. All items listed are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Accept that motion now.
I move to adopt the consent agendas amended.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I.
Opposed. Motion passes. Old business item number three, third avenue parking options.
Richard?
That's back to me again. So we were asked to, uh. Bring back some. To look at the, uh, function of the. Uh, revised parking and striping of the, uh, third avenue extended, I guess you'd call it, or. Or, uh, what do you call that? East Third Avenue? And then, uh, also bring back some costs if we were to try to, uh, alter that striping. Um, and so, uh, Levi put together a memo. Uh, for the council. Um, looking at, um. We, uh. Looked again at the, uh, site triangles. Um, and compared them to the, uh, national standards, uh, for site distance. And we found that as striped currently, um, that, uh, it is. Pretty much at the minimum site distance. Um, so. It does meet code as, uh, currently striped. Um, I did also, uh, ask the police department. If there had been any reported collisions, um, on that intersection. Uh, since it was implemented in November and they had no records of any collisions that have happened. And so the, um. So we, we, we looked at that. We also, uh, looked at what it would take to, um. Uh, remove the striping, the specifically the, um. The angle parking stalls to do something different and to re-stripe. Um, and the total cost to that, um. One of the diff, we have, we have a sand blaster that the city owns, but that would be on a fresh chip seal. Uh, it would be very damaging to that surface. We did find a contractor that has a water jet system. Um, that would be much, uh. Easier on the, that newly repaved surface. Um, the costs, it, it's $2,500 for him to show up. Um, and then the estimated amount of striping there, uh, to be removed. Um, and, and then replaced, uh, would put it somewhere in around 4,500 bucks. Is what we're figuring it would take. Uh, we did look at that corner. Um, and specifically on the Al's Auto Glass slash Catholic, uh, Charities Corner. Um, if we were to remove the two parking stalls, the angle parking stalls there and, and, and go back. To the old parallel parking, you're not gaining any parking. It's, it's. Long enough for two vehicles parallel and you put two angle parking stalls at the same. So. It wouldn't increase or decrease the parking in that location. And actually. The, with the bumper, the sight line would not change significantly. Because the bumper of that vehicle, um, is still, uh, is closer to the intersection. Um, and so, um. It would, it, it would essentially be sixes as far as site triangles, especially. Um, I know that, uh, they service, um. People for people vehicles and some of the, some larger vehicles, if they're parked in that parallel parking stall, it's going to be the same thing. Your, your site triangle is not significantly going to change more than a few feet. So, uh. So we were asked to provide the information. We did the analysis, uh, and got the costs and we are presenting that to council for your consideration.
Would you like to give your comment at this time? Please. Just if you wouldn't mind, please state your name and city of residence.
For the record, in the city of Moses Lake.
Yes. Al's Glass Service with Moses Lake for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. All right. Anyway, so, um. On option C that you have, uh, of the three that we're going to discuss. It says reconfigure, convert two angle parking stalls to parallel parking in front of the Catholic charities. And Al's Glass Service. And the cost is 4,500 plus or minus. So my question is, if in fact this is passed and everyone agrees to do it, who's paying for it?
The, the taxpayers are, ma'am.
The city?
Well, the, the taxpayers, yes.
The taxpayers.
Yes, ma'am.
So. Um. The next question is. If we have, if there is an accident. In, in that area due to the fact that the people cannot see around the cars and. And this is something, I don't know how many of you have actually gone down there during the day when our business is extremely busy with a lot of. Heavy equipment and cars that are, that are larger than, than the normal, that stick out in, into the street. You cannot see around them. You have to drive out into them, almost into the middle of that intersection. Before you can see where the, um, traffic is coming. From either the senior citizen or come in the other direction in front of Al's Glass Service. And. It's dangerous, extremely dangerous. And so who is going to be liable? To pay if there's an accident due to the fact that these people cannot see. Out there to safely go across the street.
Sure. And I think that's probably where, you know, to a degree, that's where Richard was going with his comments is that they. They've done their due diligence here to make sure that. We currently comply with what the standards are for, for being able to see at an intersection and what. What Richard's saying is that we do. So since we do. The liability shifts in. The drivers of the vehicles. Correct? I mean, not entirely ever, but yes, I think it would be pretty hard at that point to find the city liable for that.
So they're saying that the liability.
Yeah, but that's for the, the intersection, not necessarily the operations of the business with cars pulling out and.
Okay.
Showing up out of nowhere, that sightline is a little different.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Anyway, so I'm going to.
Make sure that it.
Yeah.
Possible liability doesn't fall on the business itself if. That sightliner is distorted because a big bus is pulling out or someone has to slam on their brakes or. Could it potentially result in a lawsuit against Al's Glass Service because we're operating during the day and, and something pulls out or. Or is that on the city or is that just, just on the driver itself? Is our concern.
So one question I would have. Um, and I don't know if our city ordinances or whatever are. So currently. Al's Autos Glass is doing their work, their business in the city street. They are parking their vehicles and they are. They are working on vehicles that are parked on the street. Versus being off-site. So my understanding is previously. Um, Al's. They have some doors and things that face. If you're looking at the front of the building to the left into that vacant lot, that vacant lot has now been fenced off. And so I, I, I'm, I'm not saying one way or the other, but currently, you know, there is. They're, they, where they need to do their work, where they've been doing their work is, is in the city streets. So I don't know. I don't know how that affects it one way or the other. I, I don't.
Can we clarify what you, I mean?
So, Jane, why don't you answer that?
Is that just like a vehicle gets parked there after the windows put in?
My, my understanding, and I have not, uh, based on, um. What I've been told, and I don't know if this, this is, I guess is hearsay, some, some other city employees have, have been driving by there is that. They will be, if they will park the, the, the bus or whatever out in front and then they'll change the window. On the street. So.
No, that, that is untrue. It's inside the shop. The bay is, is pretty tall enough to fit all those. No, that that is untrue. It's inside the shop. The bay is, is pretty tall enough to fit all those inside.
Okay, all right.
They never do it on on city streets. The only time that happens is a a quick rock chip repair from the drop-in customer in the parking space, but that is the only time it's worked on city streets is a quick repair.
Okay, well, uh they they apparently they were seeing people working on win- windows, when it's parked on the street. So so anyhow, I don't, I don't know if 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 that has any bearing on anything as far as liability, but.
Okay.
So did you want to say anything?
We do have a provision in our nuisance code that prohibits uh the repair of any automobile on public streets.
Okay. Does that, yeah, that.
Did you want it? Do we have, we have a minute and thirty seconds?
Oh, I didn't hear.
Uh, yeah, so sorry, the the statement that was made is in our ordinance. Ordinance is we have uh, we prohibit the repair of vehicles on a city street.
So a rock chip repair is prohibited?
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm going to assume that's because of, yeah, the the obvious liability, right?
Okay.
To to not only the person performing the work, but also to a passing motorist, for that matter. If your tool flies out of your hand or whatever, you know, then you've chipped somebody else's window.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay.
If we were doing something wrong, we will never, we won't do it again, you know, we'll pull them in.
Yeah, that's not why we're here, so.
There are other companies that are mobile that do it all the time, so I, I'm curious how that applies to them as well. Daylight and other companies that do windshield in the streets, not a quick rock chip.
Again, I think we're, we're here to talk. Let's, let's stick to the parking for now. Um.
Curious how how we should be parking our work vehicles on city streets, how you would recommend or want us to do it if it stayed the way it was, angled parking, is it okay if we park up on the sidewalk if if there's nowhere else to park the big rig? Or do you prefer we park normal up to the curb and let the let it impede the flow of traffic for the big long, you know, Dodge work vans?
No, I think I, I think that's why we're having this discussion tonight, right? So that's the question that's on, is if maybe I'm misunderstanding and feel free to jump in at any time here, folks, but uh we're, we're trying to solve that problem, which I'm going to generalize it as congestion caused by large vehicles in that area. Um, and my understanding is the proposal would be to change the angle parking with parallel parking so that a long vehicle is just parked along the sidewalk rather than having its tail end out into the street.
Back to the way it was.
Right? Which, for whatever reason, we see a lot of large vehicles on that block. So that's what we're fixing here. I mean, I'm in favor of going with parallel parking on that block myself.
Is there, is there a way for, I'm just asking, is there a way to park your vehicles like behind your business in the alley versus on the street and hanging way out there?
With the alleyway currently, there's not much parking available back there, especially with Forties and then that big fence that extends out into the alley and next door between us and Carquest. Um, and then blocking his fence flow. Uh, we really try not to do that either um back there so that he can have the garbage guy and and he can open the fence and have things pulled in and out because trying to be respectful in that matter. So so parking things back there is would congest it even further, especially with the delivery trucks that do utilize the alley if at all possible instead of blocking traffic. Um, they wouldn't be able to get through if we parked the big rigs back there with how it's designed currently, the alleyway.
I know there's, it's it's a sixty-foot alley back there. It's a big alley. So.
But yeah, but I I I kind of understand where they're coming from. But I, I mean, I went back there the other day and looked at it. It's not the best example of city planning that we ever had here, so. Because it's, I mean, it's not very well represented. The lines aren't there, right? So it's not the full width that it's supposed to be. Okay, Judy?
Isn't there also a power pole back there behind your building?
Yes.
That makes it a little bit harder. I do want to make a comment. Um, I did, there was a bus parked on the corner. People for people bus. And so as I came around the corner and I pulled into to talk with them, when I went to back out, I had to back clear out into the street before I could, before even my camera would pick up any traffic. Well, there was two cars coming. So they went around me in oncoming traffic. They didn't bother to stop. They just went around me. And so that poses that problem too for the safety. It's, it's a big, big issue.
Mr. Scog.
I uh did some looking at that one before we voted on it and kind of did the map and rerouted things and you know, it didn't seem like the net gain of of parking was worth the effort that it was going to take to renavigate that section of road. Um, I don't think the discussion of whether you work on a sidewalk or work on a street, although the legal ramifications aside. Um, I don't think we did a we didn't do anybody any favors by by coming up with that particular plan. And I think um, you know, I feel somewhat responsible of not, you know, it kind of occurred to me, but I, well, I guess it'll be all right, but um I think we did a disservice uh by rocking the boat, whether it was the right boat or the wrong boat aside. Um, I think, I think it should go back to parallel parking and uh and I know I don't like going through Third Avenue anymore. When you go to the post office, you play bumper dodge there. And then when you go on the next block, um, I I don't like the 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 uh or that that particular parking. And it seems like that particular east end of Third Avenue was kind of almost an arterial to get people onto Broadway Extended. And there's very few things that slow you up in that area. There's no roundabout there. There's no bunch of people trying to navigate there. So I would think that the traffic is a lot. You know, they're focused on getting to Broadway or getting to the theater and um uh they're not stopping and doing anything in that section per se of most of the traffic. So I don't, I think, I think it was ill planned, ill. It's not that the planning wasn't done, but as far as practicality goes, it doesn't seem too practical. And I I would be willing to, I'd say for forty-five hundred bucks that, you know, we could have thought out of, thought it out a little better. So I would, I would uh and be very much in favor of moving it back to parallel parking.
So just to be clear, the 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 forty-five hundred bucks would basically just be for that one corner of that one intersection. We wanted to do the whole street. It's going to be a whole lot more than forty-five hundred bucks.
Okay. Don?
I'm just looking at the the drawing, the only place that doesn't gain any parking would be their business. Everybody else gains significant amount of parking. Um, and on that particular street, we don't need four lanes of traffic. It's not warranted based on traffic numbers. And in this configuration, it also helps slow traffic down, um which a lot of times people are going thirty-five, forty down that stretch. Um.
So ju- just as an anecdote, the downtown, I I I know what you're saying. People go slow. Um, before we did the, so that was two thousand and six, when we redid the the downtown parking, uh we did a speed study down there and the average speeds through that section, four lane, parallel parking, was uh posted at twenty-five miles an hour. Um, and but the average speeds was like thirty-six, thirty-seven. Uh, after we did the reconfiguration, the average speeds are now about twenty, twenty-two. So it does, when, 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 when you narrow the streets and when you make it uncomfortable, people go slow. And that, you know, and that's one of the complaints we had from the downtown at the time. People are just zooming past. Nobody, nobody can even see our storefronts. So I I understand what you're saying on East Broadway. There's, there's, there's not, it's not like there's a whole lot of shopping there today. But as redevelopment happens, as things develop on that other side, there's vacant lots. Uh, if they're traveling at a more moderate speed, it might be more advantageous for some of those store owners. That's kind of, you know, the thought process is take it from four lane. It didn't need, didn't need to be four lane. We we had less than three thousand vehicles a day going on that street and they could go really fast. That's why some people like to do it. Um, and so, but taking it down to two lane, adding the angle parking to increase parking for the existing businesses and also to s- slow the traffic down.
And I will agree with Richard on the the slowing the traffic down. It helps those businesses, businesses that are not maybe a destination type business like Walmart. So you you're going slow enough that you actually acknowledge that they're there um versus just passing on by to get to wherever you're trying to get to. And that's, I think, helped downtown tremendously fill it up. Twenty years ago, downtown was not as vibrant as it is today.
Judy?
So let's get, let's get back to in front of Al's and Al's Glass. I said, let's get back to Al's Glass and the street. I think what's important, in my opinion, is that we accommodate so that they can do their business and be successful at their business. And whether we do anything else on Third Avenue or whatever out in that area. I think that we should talk also before we do that kind of thing to the business owners to see how they're going to be affected. Uh, whether they need, whether they would prefer to have that diagonal or the parallel. I understand the traffic issue. Um, but we need to go, we need to take care of this situation tonight. Thank you.
Deanna?
I, I understand your business and what you're saying about the parking. Um Richard, you said it would only be forty-five hundred for changing those four um angle parking to two parallel, correct?
There's, currently, there's two angle there. If we, we could, it would be taking out those stripes and then adding a parallel parking stripe for that fifty feet. So that's essentially room enough for a couple of vehicles. Um, uh, they're basically from the edge of their driveway to their bays, back to the maximum we can go back before you have to stop before the corner.
Is that, is that possible to do in just a small section and not end up having to do other sections? That's my bigger concern. Say if some other business decides that, well, they don't like the angled parking. Um, and I know that's not your, your issue about not liking it. It just doesn't work for your business. But say some other business down on Third says, well, this doesn't really work for us. Um, are are we open, are we opening ourselves to having to change Third Avenue again here and there? I mean, what what's, what's going to stop that from happening? Um, and how many times are we changing Third Avenue before, you know? Do we, should we just put in the plans every ten years that we change it again, just so?
Well, e- every time we chip seal it or repave it, we have an op, we have a blank canvas. We can paint it however we want to. But whether you're opening it up for other businesses to come in and request future changes, how often are we going to accommodate this? That's, that is up to council's direction.
That, that's my difficulty right there. But I do agree with what Judy said, and I said it the last time we had this conversation. When we try and meet the community's uh needs, desires, requests, um I know we, we want to do that, obviously, um but if there is, you know, maybe a a timeout or a pause and go block to block if it needs to be to to determine whether or not it's really a good idea, or maybe we make adjustments before just doing the whole thing. Um, that would be my suggestion moving forward. Um, but yeah, I have difficulty that we potentially could be hearing other businesses come up to us asking for the same thing and what that I don't want the city to conduct business that way. That would be very difficult for you. It's very difficult for the citizens too, so.
Councilmember Lombardi?
So I, I feel like I opened the can of worms when I asked you folks to look at some options. Um and to, for you folks to understand, it, they came up with that pretty quick. Um, they got right on it. It, it was ready to be presented at the last meeting, but it was such a long uh agenda that we had that we put it here. So that I want you to know right off the bat that this was taken very seriously and it was done um quickly as well. And I, that's something that we've asked staff to be a little bit more uh proactive on. And so I just, before I say my next thing, I just wanted to acknowledge staff for getting right on it. Um, I was able to thank Brian a few times, but I don't think I got a chance to speak to everyone else. So with that being said, um what would you like? Just out of curiosity.
Please respond to that.
We also know what you would like to see done on our, our.
On the street. Yeah.
Back to the way it was, essentially.
So I have a little bit of a, I got an infection in my ears. I have a little bit of problem carrying, so I have to rely on Jade kind of help me. So I want to answer that one.
Yeah, they, they, they're just asking for it to be back to the way it was because we didn't see a problem with the way the street was prior. We're a little bit different than the other side of Third Avenue. That's more, you know, retail, busy business, in and out, multiple businesses. And and the other side, although there are vacant lots, I don't see expanding into that type of environment anytime soon. So we're, we're more of a commercialized area down there where people aren't stopping, going, stopping, going into different businesses really quickly. If someone comes to us, it's usually a couple hours they're dropping their rig off for us. So um, we're just hoping to see it back to the way it was, if at all possible, if that was an option or consideration.
Reason why I asked is that generally you folks know the best way to solve it. I mean, we're seeing that from an organic standpoint with parking downtown. Um, whether it was two hours or four hours and which way to do it. And you, and they came up with some really good ideas. So um I've also heard from some of the other folks on both sides. So this is and this is a problem we have in other cities too, where we go with a cookie cutter approach, where we say, okay, from these streets, we're doing everything this way and keeping it standard and not looking at now that changes too, right? Because of the fact that depending on the type of business that you have. You know, it, it it, you know, how many, what happens if you move out of there, you move to a new location, someone else, then it, they don't necessarily need parallel parking, right? Um, so that's the things that city has to always think about, uh not only currently or what was in the past, but what's going on in the future. So um, and there is a concern that as we start to do this for one or two and become very proactive, you know, do we get others that are asking for the same thing with with good suggestions on their side? Um, I think your situation needs to be addressed from another number of standpoints. One of them being, you've been an incredible business for this city for a number of years. And optically and fairly, if we do not take care of the businesses that have made this city, then what does that say to the new businesses that are moving into the city? So I think we need to come up with what needs to be done, Mayor, um to resolve this.
Thank you, Vic. Judy, did you have something else to say?
Yes, my question would be to um Chief Sands. If you saw them parking um parallel across the parking, the diagonal parking, is that something that would be issued a ticket for, for their business?
Are you really asking me to comment about parking in the downtown area?
No, no, they're, they're out in the suburbs.
Yeah. Uh, I, I mean, a- again, we have always viewed parking in the downtown area as a complaint based on issue. So um if someone were to make a complaint, then yes, I suppose in theory we could take some sort of action, depending, again, I'd have to look at the specific statutes, whether it's a state statute or a city statute, but I suppose it is. some sort of action depending, again, I'd have to look at the specific statutes, whether it's a state statute or a city statute, but I suppose it is theoretically possible, but I don't know if anyone may complain on that. And, and again, just for the record, we're not going back to the two hour parking in the downtown reinforcement. I'd like to say that every time I talk about the downtown parking. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just wondering because of the, the large vehicles that bring supplies in or, or whatever. And so how do they, they're not able to park out into the street and of course then bring their vehicles, you know, whatever is needed to unload their vehicles, so.
And we've seen it downtown or in that area, I'm sorry, not downtown, but on that part of Third, um, where they'll park across, um, either parking on the side street or what have you. We've taken no action and I don't think that that is high on our list of things to accomplish.
Trying to cover the bases. Thanks.
Mr. Scott?
Um, it seems to me like there is kind of a, a perfect storm went along down there from the uh, fences that got put in, that got put in on the alley, some, you know, one on the corner Catholic families, um, the, the stuff from uh, Lake Otto. A- a- and I think it just kind of made this one big mess. A- a- and, and I think that uh, um, we, and to Victor's point, his business has been around for well over fifty years. And I think there should be some consideration for that grandfathered in section of, of, and consideration. So I, I think we should put it back to parallel parking. And uh, uh, just leave it the way it was and, you know, maybe put a, a stipulation that if it ever changes uh, occupancy, uh, you know, do something then, but at least for right now, I think, I think, again, to Victor's point that, you know, we've done a disservice.
Okay, well, I don't think we need to belabor this much more. I'd go ahead and with that. Oh, Don, did you want to say something?
I was just gonna say I'm okay with changing there at least half part of the street, which would be, I guess, three parking spots. There's just kind of that one random one that's just in between some driveways. If we just change those three back to parallel, leave all the other diagonal. Because I think overall we have a pretty good.
Yeah, do you want to put that in the form of a motion, Don?
Sure, I'll make the motion to.
Oh, wait, hold on. I think Judy has one comment.
Maybe before you take the stripes out, you have a conversation with Al's glass to see exactly what is needed. Um, just for conversation.
I, yeah, I think we'll do it per the standards. Does, does, does it need to be a motion? I think if you just tell, tell us to do it, we'll do it. I think, or maybe it's, Don is suggesting that he would like to see it go back to parallel parking for three spaces in front, just to make it clean.
Correct.
Uh, Deanna, is that? Judy?
Okay.
I know what you said and yeah, we were kind of talking about that down here. I get the point.
I think you need a motion.
Okay.
We're spending money.
So, uh, yeah, can you, Monty, can you bring up that, um, that uh, thing that Levi had in there, the picture?
You have a map.
Okay.
And in the agenda.
In front of Al's glass and Catholic charity.
Bring up the Yeah.
Well.
Okay.
There's three spaces.
Scroll down the agenda to that.
Well, we need to be able to park like four or five right there.
Yep.
When it was parallel.
Right, yeah, absolutely. We could do more, we could get more in there.
I just want, so right now there's, there's cat, the corner and there's two parallel parking stalls there. And then there's the driveway to their two bays. And then there's like one little parallel parking stall there.
And you're going parallel, you're going?
Yeah.
Parallel angle?
Yeah, it's angle. I, I, I'm sorry, angle parking. So we have two angle driveways, one angle. And so are you saying you want us to parallel stripe the corner to the, the driveway and then the next little piece? Is that what you're saying? Okay, that's fine. I, it. Yeah, and I think, I think we will go ahead and present this as a motion and vote on it.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah, so Don, do you want to go ahead and just say that is your motion?
Basically, that was option C, correct?
Uh, my computer went to sleep, hang on.
Option three, I believe, was two, the two parallels or the two uh, angle parking spaces. It, it did not include the third one.
I'd make a motion to change the three angled parking spots to parallel parking in front of Al's glass and the Catholic charities.
I'll second it. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And with, with, it's gonna have to warm up a little bit. Yeah, it'll be a little wait, but from what I heard, you know, if you need to park something down there the other way temporarily or whatever.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, new business item number four, uh, and I want to make sure our remote speaker is still here. Mr. Bishop? Um, I'll just let you know, uh, we'll, we'll go ahead and get this started, but be prepared to speak.
Yeah.
Get on there, okay. Um, Vivian, why don't you get us started?
So we've received a application for a short subdivision and as you know, uh, when somebody develops property, they're required to provide all the infrastructure and improvements um, for code. But this one is located on South Frontage Road, west of Loves, west of Hanson Road. And um, the applicant is seeking uh, deferrals and waivers and deviations to the code. The request is a deferral of requirement to build three-quarter width improvements to South Frontage Road until such a time as this area is further subdivided and or developed. The segment of South Frontage Road is currently constructed as adequate to serve the vicinity with no decrease in existing levels of service resulting from this subdivision. It deviation of requirement to construct and connect sanitary sewer improvements. The site would continue to use existing septic system until a time if when sanitary sewer is developed along South Frontage Road. A three-inch pressure effluent force main is at the intersection of Sage Road and Idaho Road. This main would be required to be extended approximately forty-four hundred square feet to serve the project location at the developer's expense. And also a deviation of the requirement to construct and connect city water system and fire hydrant improvements. The site would continue to use existing well until a time if when the city water system is developed along South Frontage Road. An existing twelve-inch main is stepped out at the intersection of Idaho Road and Sage Road. This main would need to be extended approximately four thousand four hundred feet to serve it in development at the developer's expense. The developer would like to propose fire flow storage on site in place of fire hydrants. So, and it, for the council to consider, the request is appropriate for deferral due to the location and distance from existing services. And that the distance is too great to reasonably connect. This is an existing physical condition that the applicant cannot resolve. Additionally, the extension of utilities would not loop into other existing or potential future utilities. An extension would be considered a dead end as to the fact that the property is not surrounded by nor adjacent to the urban growth area nor other lands within the city limits. And then the engineer provided comments for you to consider also. So this is your first reading. We're asking you, um, to bring this back next meeting for your consideration of, uh, provided a covenant to this property.
Okay. Um, all right, I think we'll go ahead and take Mr. Bishop's comments at this point. Seth, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, the only thing I wanted to add, thank you Vivian for doing such a great job, is we do have an underground storage tank for fire flow just to the property to the west. So we would be able to use that as sufficient fire flow.
And, and what's the purpose of the development? Sorry?
It's just a, a commercial structure. Is it, that's it. We're cutting off the existing residential and then they want to put a new structure on it. I think it's going to be more like a warehouse type structure.
So we'd need to evaluate whether or not that uh, fire flow that they're proposing is sufficient for this subdivision and the fire department will need to review it also.
Do we feel like we'll have that information before the next?
I think you do have it. It was submitted with the application.
Okay.
If she doesn't have it.
Review hasn't been done.
No.
It's probably in the file somewhere.
Probably. But I can get it to her, I can get it to her quickly and get the engineers to look at it or the fire department to look at it either way.
Sure. Brett, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I was uh, just trying to uh, see where we were with the Assistant Chief Beach here. Uh, I think fire department is going to have to look at that existing tank to see what kind of fire flow would be available for this project. Uh, we haven't reviewed.
So the review has not been done yet. Okay. I will, so my question still stands. I think, is that something that can be performed between now and?
Yeah, I, I think we can get that done. We just need to get all of the information.
Well, it won't be your responsibility.
It, it will not be mine, but uh, but as long as we can get all of that uh, information, a- absolutely.
Yeah, make all the promises you want, you know?
Yes, I, I can, I can give you a few more, Frank.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions? Looks like Deanna does. No?
Actually, that was going to be my question. Does fire know whether or not that's a sufficient flow? But yeah, so, got it.
I know, I know I supplied the tank diagrams and everything to him with the application for the storage facility on that site to the west, but I'll get him whatever he needs.
What's the zoning?
I think it's light, light industrial.
So this is qualified?
Yeah.
Okay.
But.
Nice duck pond back there.
The fire flow or the fire tank, the water tank would need to be on the property that's being developed, uh, on adjacent property. So.
Oh. Did, did you understand that, Mr. Bishop?
I didn't, I didn't see where it'd be a problem if we had proper easements.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at it.
Okay, I would hope that that's something that is, can be accommodated. I mean, if the adjoining property is willing to do that.
Yeah, that's what the uh, application was based on.
Anybody else have any other comments on this? Okay? Looks like nobody's vehemently opposed at this point to what's going on, so.
So we'll, we'll bring it back next.
Yep, great. Thank you for your time, Mr. Bishop, and I apologize for the wait.
Oh, no, 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 it's fine. Thank you guys.
Yeah, and did you have anything more to add or you think the, the water issue or the fire flow issue is probably the number one here for now?
I think the fire flows the absolute issue.
Okay. All right, great. Uh, and then this is just, sorry, I do have one more question. You said it's just a warehouse facility, so is there traffic, any concern about that?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, and we're getting a head shake no from our staff here, so, okay, well, we'll look forward to hearing what's next.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, item number five, which is West Shore Drive Gravity Steward Extension Project Revision. Guessing at you, Richard. Guilty as charged. Um, so we put in the, got approved in the budget last year to, for a project on West Shore Drive. The original scope of the project was we were going to extend uh, approximately a quarter mile, uh, that super deep manhole we have there, Fairway Drive and West Shore Drive. We're going to try to get that to uh, extended to May Valley Road and out of the hillside, going from thirty feet to just ten feet. In anticipation of the county's repaving project, they told us their schedule was that they were going to start their, their reconstruction project in late summer and it would be a late summer, fall construction period. Um, and so we were uh, about ready to give county our plans at the end of December. Um, first week of January, they called us and told us that their contractor, they have awarded the contract and the contractor is going to start March third. So we do not have time to, to bid it, construct it and get out of their way before their construction project. So, um, the budget was originally for, it was in the seven hundred thousand dollar range, uh, was dedicated to this project. And as part of that project, we were also going to work with the um, Grant County Conservation District to extend uh, a certain number of uh, sewer services along West Shore Drive to people on the lake to get their septic systems off of feeding the lake nutrients. Um, and so we would like to pivot the project and take the money that we were going to put in the deep sewer um, to extend more services to the lakeside. Uh, we'll put reimbursements on there so that as people's septic systems fail or as uh, they, they will then be able to just pay the reimbursement for the, the little bit of cost um, to the city for that uh, sewer extension and they'll have to pay their development charges and all of that, but they can just get connected to the city and take those septic systems off the lake hopefully sooner. And so we would, we would anticipate, uh, based on some conversations with contractors of cost, uh, there are approximately sixty-two residences between um, Fairway Drive and uh, Road Four that we can stub to right now. Um, and the anticipated, um, so we're not asking for any more money out of the budget. In fact, we think that uh, when it's all said and done, it will cost less than, than the original budgeted amount. Um, the other thing we would like to do as part of this project, um, that was identified after I submitted this um, budget report was, um, we want to do some more work at Fairway and, and uh, West Shore where we have that really stinky manhole. Um, we'd like to reroute the force mains there and instead of cascading down into the thirty-foot deep manhole to reroute them to a shallower manhole and hopefully help mitigate the mitigate the, the smell. So, uh, tha- that's what we're asking. We're just asking council to, to allow us.
Why is that collector there at that point? Is there's a lift station like half mile down the road and then why is that there?
So, so the Moses Point Force or the, the force main from Moses Point, that's the, that's the stinky one. That extends and then when we, when we were working with, um, I can't remember the name of the developer, well, it was the development, but when we put in that really deep sewer and, and put the last manhole in there, uh, we replaced the manhole that received that force main. And so we just put a drop manhole, a drop manhole connection in there and we found that we also put in a uh, a biofilter thinking that it would mitigate the odors. Um, but it, 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 yeah, it is not keeping up.
There's one of those in Salt Lake.
Yeah, it's not keeping up. So, so, so now we'd like to, like I said, intercept that, reroute it around the deep manhole, take it a little further down to a shallow manhole and, and replumb it in there. Um, and hopefully we'll take care of we didn't have nearly the odor problem before, even though it was the same lift station until it, it started falling twenty-five feet.
But in light of our other conversations tonight, it's only going to get worse, right? So, yeah, that's probably prudent to get.
Yeah, so, so we're just asking council to, uh, because Yeah, so so we're just asking council to, because we are deviating from the original project scope. We're just asking council to allow us to pivot and proceed forward with this new project scope. Like I said, we're not asking for any more money. Hopefully, we're going to save some money from the original budget and and proceed with the, I talked with the county engineer tonight. I I have plans that I can submit to him probably by the first of next week. They get their blessing so we can move forward and get out to bid.
There's nothing I like hearing more than the county and the city working together on a project. I appreciate that. Anybody have questions? Mr. Scog.
Did you say that we're going to stub out from the sewer to the property lines on everybody's house on every?
On every, the lakeside currently up up until Road Three is pretty densely already developed. And so we're going to extend a stub to every existing lot. Going beyond there, it gets a little more sparse. So we're still going to hit the existing homes as far as the empty lots. My crystal ball's broke. Anytime I stub out, it's always in the wrong spot if I'm guessing. So we're right now, we're we're not proposing to stub to those lots.
What about like for the comp plan amendment? The applicant that's going to add that piece along West Shore where there'll be just one stub there that?
Yeah, was that along the May Valley? You're talking the the UG adding the?
Yeah, isn't that on Road Three and West Shore?
No, we had, there was the, you're talking, there were some zone changes. And then there was the one that was on May Valley Road.
Maybe I was mistaken. Oh, excuse me. I was thinking of the one on May Valley Road. You're correct.
Yeah.
I feel like there is another developer.
We we have, well, I saw a piece of property for sale at Road Three and and May Valley or West Shore Drive, and they're saying they're they're, yeah, it's it's for sale. And and part of their ad was city utilities are right here.
Okay, so you're aware of it at least.
Oh, yes. But it's on the it's on the west side of the road and the force main is on the west edge of the right away. So it's right there.
Any other questions? Accept a motion.
I'd make a motion that we that we approve the scope of work revision as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Closed. Motion passes.
Richard, will you speak with Ronnie at the Conservation District? Is he aware of this?
I, yes, I told him we were trying to make this happen to stub to more lots. They the just, I I don't know if the council has knowledge of this, the the Conservation District is trying to get a half million dollar grant to help facilitate taking as many people off of septic on the lakeside there as possible. They, the grant would pay for all of the costs for the individual property owners to connect to the city, which would be our system development charges to reimburse the city for the stub out as well as all of the construction costs on the lots. So they were estimating that that they could maybe handle twenty or so homes with that half million dollars. And so that's that was the original scope. We were going to try to get stubbed out to all the lots that the Conservation District identified. But now we just, like I said, just wanted to do them all. That way they all have an option.
That's really great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Especially in light of the county changing their plans on you midstream. So again, continue to have those conversations with them as much as you can, but we avoid that. Administrative reports.
A couple of things this evening on the dais in front of you is a 2025 poverty simulation worksheet. We received this from Hope Source this week, and they are just inviting you to attend this poverty simulation. So if you're interested, it's scheduled, I believe, for February fourth, I recall the date correctly. But you can register at the link that's there on the on the spreadsheet. So they just wanted you to be invited to this simulation event. So that they're holding. And then the other thing is there there, I believe there was a couple of the council members that were in the Community Development Public Works meeting today. And they discussed the Dunes Treatment Plant emergency situation that we had where we had a power outage over the weekend and the 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 main power breaker was damaged. And I'm going to let Richard kind of speak to what happened from there and what they're what they're doing. The reason I'm bringing it up is that we will be coming back to you at a later date with an emergency, you know, amendment basically or a motion to get this repaired. So I'll let Richard Richard speak to it from there.
So on Sunday, we had a massive power surge at the Dunes Treatment Plant. Our power monitoring system recorded a fourteen hundred amp surge across the three legs at the at the Dunes. Yeah, it cooked. They had a massive, a big arc flash and cooked one of the motor starters completely and damaged the two adjacent, which basically, and it also destroyed two of our blower motors that supply the oxygen to the digester areas of the plant. So we were essentially dead in the water. We we shut down the 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 main power on Monday. How they discovered it is they they showed up and the generator, the emergency generator was running, but the main power breaker was off. So no, no power is getting anywhere. And so we ended up shutting down the pumps at our main COF pumping station and diverting into our emergency pond to because at that point we were out of compliance with our our ecology permit. Anyhow, so we immediately, I just pulled up the the phone book and I called a Farmers Electric who has done, they did work out there with the generator transfer switch and the generator installation. He was available. He ran right out there. He was able to source some three, no, excuse me, four motor starters and was able to in less than twenty-four hours, get three of them back up and running. The PLC is now alive again. And so we are operating within permit again, and we're now draining the pond, the emergency pond at COF. So so kudos to our sewer department and grateful to Farmers Electric for being out there within hours and getting that up and running again. So we now have some work to do to make the final fixes. And but we had we had budgeted in the in this year's budget to do some improvement work out there already for the PLC and some of those things. So it's actually speeding it up a little bit. We're going to get to it real quick. So but
Yeah. There's nothing built into the telemetry that would notify of that condition where the generator's running, but?
Like I said, it it actually had killed the main breaker.
Right, you should have something that would.
So.
Yeah, there's a way to do it.
Yeah, the the generator was running, but it wasn't providing any power to anything. So everything inside there was dead.
Current transformer after your main breaker and it's one, yeah, you want to verify both or?
Yeah. So we we have, we've also notified the PUD. I had a conversation with the PUD today about it. And we're going to try to provide them all the information we had of times and locations, or I mean, times and and what records we have of what happened out there and they're going to look on their end to see if they can if any expla explanation of why that massive power surge hit at our facility. We've had, there has, on the that end of the world, we've had some other issues where we've had some I don't know what you, some power surges that have caused some damages in the past. So we're just trying to figure out, you know, what it is and how. Yeah.
In that area.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
You may want to look at a surge protection device as well.
Something, yeah.
Yeah.
That's it that I have.
All right. Council committee reports. Councilmember Myers.
Just two things. The Ad Hoc Homeless Committee met on the sixteenth. That's part of this poverty simulation. We were brought up to speed on this a little bit, but also the the point in time count is happening on the thirtieth. And if you would like to go, reach out to either Vivian or Elizabeth. They can get you on the the schedule. It is quite an opportunity. If you've never been on one, you can go around and see where the homeless camps are, talk to some of the homeless people, find out their story, and then you can also see the providers and how they try to address some of their issues and connect them with services. So if you can make it, definitely, definitely do it. The other one is the Public Works and Community Development. We covered most of the items tonight that we talked about. But Richard, you talked about some positive news on our water source. If you care to share a little bit about that?
Very preliminary. I had a conversation with the Bureau on our M and I contract. Early on, we had asked the Bureau if there was any way to take our water diversion out of the lake versus trying to go out of town to a canal. And originally, we were told that no, that they did not have any delivery right out of the lake. They, late last year, November is timeframe, I asked again. And I actually convinced them to have an internal conversation up the ladder a little bit. And preliminarily, I was told that they are considering the lake to be part of their delivery system. And so they're going to proceed with that in mind until, this is what I was told, until we're told otherwise. So there, so the local office will is, so we we just, again, this has been within the last two weeks. We've, I met with Chad and we had a brainstorming session earlier this week trying to fix, because they want to know, well, the immediate question is where do you want to take it out of the lake? I don't know. We got to figure that out. So so we've been starting to brainstorm. I've also, we're going to recruit our we're going to have to bring in some other brains. I'm I'm, I want to see if we can get RH two, who did a lot of preliminary work in the comp plan on on the plant out at the the operations facility to see if they can help us.
How many acres?
How many acres do we need for a plant? So just for scope and scale, City of Pasco has a sixteen million gallon a day plant, which is on on a site that's approximately three acres.
That's not that much.
It's not that much.
Okay.
So, you know, the the questions are going to be, is the city going to try to locate it on existing city property? Are we going to have, are we going to try to go out and buy some ground? Where would be, where would be the best location? Ideally, it would be one plant and not many plants, just for operational ease. And so where would it, where would the, we, where would we locate a plant that would require the least distribution upgrades to get it to the most areas of town that we can? So there's a lot of thought that needs to go into this. But I'm hopeful that we can at least give the Bureau. I don't know if they need one location, if we can give them a couple, three different locations or whatever, and and hopefully I'd like to get that bought out and presented to them this spring.
This, this is what we need to figure out. I mean, then get in front of our lobbyists as soon as possible.
I've already spoken with David Martin. We had a conversation about this and and brought it up with him. And so because he was, at one point, now everything's kind of on hold with the federal government, but he had about a million dollars in an earmark to go to this.
Well, that's an interesting thing you're saying, though, because there's other comments being made by the administration right now regarding a giant faucet, quote unquote, in the Pacific Northwest that they're going to turn on. So I I believe in a lot of ways, right now, the next two to four years is a very, very good time to aggressively have these conversations with these entities because they may be more willing than ever to give us what we're rightfully owed as citizens of this area. So, Mr. Scog.
Could we use that water as it comes out of the lake for any irrigation of any parks?
I mean, can we? We we currently do. Every park, every park that we have, and Doug can speak to this, every park that we own that touches the lake is irrigated out of the lake. We don't use, we we've converted them all except for Marina Park.
Except for Marina. Marina is the only park, and we're just waiting on power connection to get a pump put in there. Everything else that touches the lake is irrigated with lake water.
And and that's through the MLIRDs, right? So that doesn't, that doesn't, would not count against whatever we're taking out of the lake. This, this is, this would go to a surface water treatment plant that we would treat to drinking water standards and put in our pipes.
That is cool. Really cool. Deanna?
I was just going to bring up MLIRD. Do they have anything to do with this part of what you were just talking about? Okay.
No.
Thank you, Richard. That's all I have.
Thank you, Don. Deanna?
Well, I don't have as exciting news as, you know, more water or access to water. I do want to share, though, that the Health District, the money that we that the city has funded them with, they are utilizing part of that funding to purchase PPE, protective equipment, personal protective equipment, if no one knows what PPE is, so that not only can our city staff, but members of the community that have taken on the cleanup of the homeless camps, that they can pick up the needles and that sort of thing safely. So so we do know where some of our money is going now.
Great. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Medow. Do this out of order.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Scog.
Just what Don talked about and what Richard talked about, it felt pretty exciting. I just want to applaud you for not taking no for an answer and keep asking. And I I mean, that's the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor.
Yeah, Port of Moses Lake will have a team that will be going to Olympia in the next couple of days. And they have a full slate of legislators that will be talking to as well as getting an update on from all the other ports as well. LTAC, we had an incredible, almost borderline phenomenal presentation of for GPS competitor to datafye. The fairgrounds is already using this product, so it already has a track record. And it looks like if we go with this product, depending if we do, that it'll also open up a lot of other avenues like sponsorships and so forth. So it's a type of product where you can really build off of it. And so we're still in the process of evaluating and comparing the two, but it's very promising. I know the other LTAC board members were, their heads were spinning. We were all just writing notes down. So it's pretty cool. And then lastly, Brett, I just want to say thank you again for your services. You've have a great track record, what you've done. You can fly into retirement proud. you have a great track record, what you've done. You can fly into retirement proud of what you've done. I mean, you had some things like the care unit that, uh, that's, that was a home run, and that came under your watch, so thank you again.
Great. Um, I don't really have much to add. I unfortunately missed the Parks, Rec, and Cultural Services meeting, the last one. I will remind everyone, we do have an AGCT meeting on Thursday evening in Soap Lake, correct? At the Del Red Tavern. Um, and yes, again, I would like to thank Chief Bastian for your years of service here, and best of luck to you moving forward. And also, again, thank you to Rob Carlinzey for joining us as our new city manager. And with that, uh, I'll remind everyone, the next council meeting is February the eleventh at six-thirty PM right here. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. No other business, okay?